Mr. Vaughn is not here, otherwise we're fine. And we're going to begin with a moment of silence, Mr. Vaughn's evening. But we'll take about 30 seconds to set our hearts and our minds to the evening ahead. And we're working for the benefit of the county and trying to find our best way forward. It can just take about 30 seconds.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I amend that we adopt the agenda as per Senate.
Motion by Mr. Guzzi.
Second.
And second by Mr. Stru. Any questions or adjustments you may? Hearing none.
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi?
Yes.
Dr. Lauterbach?
Yes.
Mr. Stru?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. We go directly to public comments on amended items?
We have two speakers. Charles Newton.
Hello folks. I'd just like to talk to you tonight about the solar ordinance. I think you have a fairly good one submitted to you by the consultant with the extra work from your last session. However, there's one thing that happened down in Spotsylvania County that I think would be wise to try to consider in ours, and that's protecting our forest resources. The present ordinance says that you can not cut down a forest after applying for or apply for a forested area to be in solar panels. But what happened in Spotsylvania County was that the applicant made deals with the landowners prior to applying to cut down their forests, log it, and then that they would apply and pay them lots of money, you know, for the use of their land. I'm sorry that this is not working too well, but if we were to just insert in that ordinance that you may not put a solar facility on any land that had been forested or had been forested but then cut off within the prior three years and three years prior to the application, that would pretty well discourage any of that kind of malarkey. So if you understand what I'm getting at, make sure that landowners can't make separate deals ahead of time, cut down their land in a year or two or three prior to an application, and then have the applicant say, "Well, it wasn't, it's not forested, so that's why we're going to put panels there." So anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Rod Graves?
Yes.
No more speakers.
Good. For action matters, the family, the resolution on the VRS, enhanced hazardous duty benefits.
Back in approximately 2006, the county adopted a resolution just like this for enhanced duty for hazardous duty benefits. And at the time, we did not have EMS. We just had law enforcement. So that gives them an enhanced benefit so that after 20 years of service, five of it has to be under someone that has the Leo's benefit, they can retire with full duty because it is a stressful, you're risking your life every day. The same with EMS, and it's now that we have gotten EMS, they changed the code in the IRS, it was around 2009, that it added EMS or emergency medical technicians to this benefit. It added it in the code, so as you read it, it was very clear. It said law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, and jail officers. So we made the assumption that our EMTs were covered under this hazardous duty benefit, and they were not, because all this time, because we needed to have a resolution adding them to that benefit. We've already paid the money, so we need to actually formalize this resolution so that they can get that benefit, that they can.
Okay, I'll adjourn to motion to bring the floor to the board.
Can we approve motion? Do we have that vocal hearing? Or is it just?
You can just do the, for the resolution, no motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I amend that Page County Board of Supervisors adopt the enhanced hazardous duty benefits to the EMS of our county as presented.
Motion by Mr. Guzzi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lauterbach. Any questions or comments?
I'm sure they'll be very appreciative. I almost hate to do it because I think then Woody may retire earlier, but he's on vacation right now, so.
Can I take my motion back?
Any further comment?
Mr. Guzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach?
Yes.
Mr. Stru?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Thank you. There were a bunch of changes. Any?
Yes, sir. We have a few. A majority of these are just money in, money out. However, I'll go through these just so you can have an idea of what we've got. The sheriff's office has received $4,544 from the comp board. We actually got some reimbursement for some guard duty at the hospital, which is wonderful because that's, we don't usually get that. The sheriff's office received a new grant for $50,000, and this will be used toward COVID activities for preparation response of COVID-19. They request appropriation of, there's carryover grants of four grants that total $179,828.2, and this, they have to, can only be used toward the obligations of the grant. The sheriff's office also requests $25,750 to replace a 2013 Ford Taurus that was recently totaled. And because it was an older vehicle, the insurance is only going to pay $6,250 toward the replacement, which as you know how that works, you can't get a new vehicle. So they are requesting the additional $25,750 to replace the vehicle. And then Battle Creek landfill, I have to ask Jeff to come in case you have questions on this. Battle Creek landfill is requesting $44,430 to purchase a new mini excavator, but they have brought in additional revenue to offset this cost with that soil that we're bringing in from another business. So to date, they've already made $64,113 on that soil, so that was not planned in the budget.
And how much was it?
The piece of equipment is $44,430.
And I, you want me, I had a question on the sheriffs.
Okay.
The $20,000 would be adding to additional, that's additional budget request.
Yes.
So, but.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
What I'm saying, he's asking for more money for a car, but we still have received all the cars that are on order. We have cars that, didn't we approve a car at the last meeting? I mean, it's not, it's clear cut, it's just saying yes to a new car because.
Right, just this past week, actually, the past two weeks, we did get vehicles. So we are up to date on the vehicles at this moment.
So saying we did without vehicle, I mean, I know times could be tough in schools or in taxes and everything else, we just, we were doing without vehicles and providing phenomenal service.
Mm-hmm.
We just added multiple vehicles to the fleet over the last two or three weeks. I don't know if this one should be hastily replaced.
That's why I gave you two different motions.
Okay.
So I gave you the, if you choose to approve all of them, the total is $304,553 of the majority, which I said is pass-through, it's state funding.
Pass-throughs, right.
Or in the case of the landfill, they've brought in more revenue in the new program than.
Which again, is kind of like a pass-through option.
Right.
I just, concerning about doing stuff at a, at a one meeting notice, you know what I mean, as far as.
Yeah, so if you choose not to fund the full replacement of the vehicle, you would go with option number two.
And then that $6,000 goes back into the, to the county, or how does this?
Yes, that will go back into the county.
At a later point, if needed, we could disperse it, do whatever with that. It'll go back to the general fund though?
Yes, it would go to the general fund.
What would this vehicle be used for?
It was, the 2013 Taurus, it was driven by one of our deputies.
And we've added, we've added several new cars because they came in. We've added, it was three, wasn't it?
Well, it was three in the current year and then two from last year that we got, so they should have bought about five.
So.
They just got five.
We were going without five, we just got five. I don't know if we would replace this one at a haste, is my, is my concern.
And we, we got a grant to replace the animal control vehicle too.
Right, that's our six. Well, yeah, so it's not, we don't have it yet. I mean, we just don't know how this is going to play out over the next few months with COVID and everything else and taxes, so anytime you can pause.
Was the previous five vehicles, were they still on the road and replaced by new vehicles or were they off the road?
They were, they would be replacing older vehicles.
Okay, so the others were actually in operation?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You could, you could hold one of that. Are we auctioning any of those five away then, at this point?
I have not heard that yet, but that's usually what we do is offer.
Obviously, if they had like $200,000, we should, I mean, definitely, right? Didn't have the loan transmission, we should definitely sell that for.
Right.
$50 bucks or something. I don't know what, Mark wants it maybe, he's got enough shit. Rebuild that thing.
I'm good.
I have a separate question concerning the grant funding, the $50,000. Is that a new grant?
Yes, that was a new grant.
Who wrote the grant?
Tina Comter.
So.
She, she does that for the sheriff.
Right, Tina Comter. You know what that specifically is used for?
Yes, it is all toward COVID for supplies. I think they bought masks, they bought gloves, they bought full PPE suits for the jail.
He's got $50,000 in that there?
That, that was, it was specific, that's to, yeah. Sanitizing materials.
Because I know some of the towns had a hard time trying to spend that amount of money, but I mean, obviously there are more contact with people. But I think, I think we want to be careful with that, obviously, because that's a lot of.
A lot of masks.
And there were no COVID funds for that, for that kind of purchase?
They got a grant for that, so yes.
Did we just?
That's what they're using that for.
In light of the information you gave us, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I amend that the Page County Board appropriate the grant self-funding request is presented in an amount of $278,803 as outlined in the attachments, and consider other requests at a later date in time.
Motion by Mr. Guzzi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stru. Mr. Stru. Any further comment, question?
I would just like to add that, I don't know if Jeff wants to say anything, but this, this piece of equipment will further enhance the recycling program at landfill. And so this will allow them to fill more mailers faster and then load the material for.
I spoke to Jeff, and if he's, if he's requesting $40,000, and he's already made $60,000, and he can make additional money, then this is certainly paying for itself faster than anything else we've got going on.
Right.
Make more money, Jeff.
I'll do it.
It's, it's one of the worst features of these masks, is you can't, you can't smile, you can't frown, freelip, you can't. All right. Any further comment?
Mr. Lauterbach?
Yes.
Mr. Stru?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Okay, board of commissioners, Regina?
Yes, the first one for this evening is for the board of equalization. If you recall at the last meeting, the board, you guys nominated David Reed, Nancy Kaiser-Bryant, Julia McHont, and Michael Painter. However, since that time, David Reed has said that he will not be able to serve due to other obligations. So at a minimum, the board should consider appointing an alternate to serve in the event that one of our members is unable to serve as a conflict. These appointments need to be made as soon as possible in order to schedule the training with the Department of Taxation. And I believe that some of you have been working on some possible appointments.
Did mine? I have no, did it confirm or not?
I talked to him, and he said that he would be unable to serve.
It is a conflict?
Yes, not a conflict, just requires more time than he thought.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have two individuals that I recommend to the board for consideration. One is Mr. Tom Mitchell. He is a local individual that has, his business is in home inspections, so he is familiar with what is involved, the lay-in, and all sorts of, I mean, the actual structure of the buildings and everything associated with construction in the area. And so therefore, he also has inside knowledge, institutional knowledge, on the value of property and, I think, he has it for. And also, my wife, Natalie Lauterbach, is, considering it is a possibility of doing that, she has also been a middle state victim in the past, and is very familiar with that. With the board's consideration, I would say that if there's, if there's any view that that is a conflict of any sort, I certainly would understand that. I just laid out two names. Now, Tom, I know he's very well qualified to do that, and my wife's got a lot of experience in doing it, but I think there's a desire to put someone else in that position, who understands that and is willing to do it.
No, I think we can have two alternates, Regina.
If you have a five-member board, you can have two alternates.
So that would make us five. That would make us two alternates, right? We'd have three, we'd have two.
You can either point these two as two alternates.
Right, or.
They would have to be both regular members and over, have two alternates.
Right, okay. And then, Nathan, is there any conflict with interest?
I don't see any conflict unless he would appeal his.
His property.
I'm not appealing any claim.
Somebody having a chance to raise his taxes. No, I think that's, I think, I mean, I certainly had a person that was very interested, and then after he looked at it, I mean, it's not an easy position to feel in daytime meetings, and I'm thinking if anybody steps up to, for that, and with sickness and stuff like that, we need as many as we can get, so thank you for, you want to make that official motion?
Yes, with consideration, I will make that motion, and we have Tom Mitchell and Natalie Lauterbach.
Second.
Is it appropriate to make a motion for family members?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, nothing. Just just thought.
I will refer to our citizens.
We got Nathan Staley.
No, I mean, just for the motion, I agree, I mean, not the serving.
Mr. Stru?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yeah.
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach?
Okay. Other further?
Not, not.
All right, go to consent agenda.
We've got one more.
Oh, yes, we need, I'm sorry, I got super caught up for that. So we do, we do have broadband authority, but they can see to District Four due to passing the period out of that. And I believe Mr. Holt was talking with Eric Benson, who is willing to serve on that authority.
Did we get any more headway on the broadband authority that you're looking into?
Well, it depends on what you're going to do with, what Hampton is going to do with the whole process. Broadband, the broadband itself is set with those contracts, you know.
Well, we never, we never change a contract, and we would, we would have to fulfill those contracts, but are we in best interest to wait 30 days or 90 days, 60 days until this entity sets up the utility before we appoint or unappoint or whatever?
Probably give you some more flexibility.
Do you mind Mr. Holt's to hold for 30 days, or? I just think we have, if we, we've taken the step to move forward with our own utility, I don't want to complicate things. And would you recommend that as attorney?
I think you ought to wait till she gets established with what she wants to run and see, see how it mesh together.
Yes, it may, it may not, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's going to happen then, if you're going to just ban the broadband authority?
And again, the contracts they have in place, they have in place, but at this point, they are completed the task that they did in six years ago. So we're not ever, we thank them for what they did, and the contracts that they put in place to try to help, that's fine, but they publicly said, many of them said, that they fulfilled what they thought their goal was. Now, if anybody has a place to, we need them to change their titles to, you know, to help with the authority, the utility, whatever it is, we don't know, right?
We don't.
We don't.
No, we don't.
We don't.
That's why you need to keep that option open.
And adding could only complicate things more.
Right. You have to change.
So if you're okay with that, I think that's in our best interest.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Benson, thank him for signing up and telling him to stand, stand by, I think it'd be awesome, but we just don't know.
It's going to depend on how many customers that we get to.
Absolutely. There's, there's so much, you know, and Mrs., I know Mrs. Muller's been in contact with, you know, RF Connect, they have meetings next week, and we're not, our, our mountains and everything else, there's no easy solution. I mean, it's just not.
Yeah, maybe.
And I did talk to Patrick Embry today, and he has things ready to deploy, and I think he had a calls with RF Connect.
Yes.
And just, nothing's easy, nothing's easy. And Mr. Embry said, I mean, the two that they did is we're going to have to test them to see if they're right.
Yep.
I mean, if solar panels come up, we don't know.
Well, at least those are going to have cameras on, so you can see.
I know. Everybody wears a mask nowadays, hard. That guy looked like Mark Stru for the mask. So.
Exactly, so I mean, I don't think we need to establish a whole utility department and have, you know, 100 customers, so we'll see how it goes.
Right, right.
As far as we know about.
Going back to the issue of the broadband authority as it stands, though, do they have any existing contracts or is there any?
Three.
And does it require us to have that broadband authority?
Yeah, you're going to have to keep the broadband authority. I think what Keith is trying to do is see whether there's some synergism between that and what we get done here locally within the, what Anthony gets done. If there is, then we try to use that synergy, but it's too early to tell right now. It may be that you change the membership of the board, or a number of things may need to happen in order to make that synergy work, if there is any.
Yeah, if there is.
Yeah, may not be any, and so you just park them over on the side and just leave.
Mr. Chairman, I think also we need to have some discussion, some thought at the point of, as we move along, if we really want to have the utility service, in my opinion, because I'm not sure that the county needs to be operating private sector utility operation, but we might find in the future that we could sell off whatever we develop and get out of that, because I don't think we need to be into collecting fees and all of the individuals running that down.
That provides service.
But we do, but many municipalities provide waters, septic, trash, I mean, I understand, you know, utilities are always part of government, right? And unfortunately, we've been in the country and didn't have any of that, but I would be all for, if it's established and working, what, you know, and somebody wanted to buy a Comcast, a Cox, a, you know, that's great. I mean, there's no reason for us to run it unless, the only reason for us to run it is the position we're in now, nobody wants to.
Well, that's my, that's my.
Right, absolutely.
I think we ought to have it flexible enough.
Yes.
We could move it if we want to, because I don't think, long-term, we need to grow government more.
Right.
Yes, there are some utilities and stuff that provide on localities, but doesn't necessarily mean that you have to give them utilities for the reasons.
And I'm all for, I think that's my hesitation to grow an entity that may or may not, I mean, if we, if we sell it off, we want as little, as flexible as we can. So that's kind of my thoughts as well.
Also not sure that we, that we have, always have a history of public, of public agencies doing, doing a job, whereas a private organization is looking out for profit and working at it. There are plenty of examples of that where, where public utilities are run downhill, a lack of, a lack of, a lack of real incentive. Anything further there?
I think we're all in agreement to try to do what's best for the citizens, and let's see how it plays out.
Consider agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. The Page County Board of Supervisors approved the consent agenda as follows. Financial reports from periods of October 1st to 31st, 2020, accounts payable of checks, payroll checks, payroll deposits, and payroll tax-related account accounts, totaling $4,336,148.28 for the month of October 2020, the minutes of October 6th, 2020, and October 20th, 2020, and the county claims totaling $450. Does that complete our poverty fund?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holt. Any comments at all on this required? I also would always want to point out that the warrant report is an absolute open book as to how we're, how we're, how we're paying for things, and who we're paying money to, how much. The new, the new version of the warrant report is, is very, very helpful, and it's something worth looking at and studying, sort of to see how, see who's buying what and from whom, and so on, it's very, very telling.
And when you look at that large dollar amount, just a reminder that a lot of that is that CARES Act money.
Yes.
So that's unusually high.
Well, well done with, well done with dispersing and keeping track of. Any further comments?
I do with the CARE, with the CARES Act, COVID grants, all of that, are we doing any special audit of anything? A lot of money, a lot of receipts, a lot of, a lot of municipalities, businesses, as well as departments, above, beyond our normal audit, are we doing anything just to make sure that that was all done correctly that we'll have to explain in any future? Would we, would that be an option, or what's your thoughts on that?
So what, what we are receiving, I have a Dropbox file for each town, each separate CARES Act pop that we've gotten, and for us, so it all requires, before I, we reimburse any of the towns for anything, it requires the audit certification that our auditor gave us this letter, what you're using it for, you have to have all the receipts, and it has to fall within the guidelines of an allowable expense, I really suppose, before we even.
I think that's good, right? Perfect. Absolutely. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, our auditors, when they were here, they did review what we were doing, and we're happy with it.
And it certainly added millions to our budget line, and it's first ones, so thank you for doing that. I think we want to make sure that that's done.
We're going to come to old business, the planning commission membership.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just need direction from you guys on what to do, as I had indicated, Earl.
You didn't vote.
Oh, you didn't vote on the, this consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I apologize.
Sorry.
This happened before.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi?
Yes.
Do we, do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Lauterbach?
Yes.
Mr. Stru?
Yes.
By the commission membership.
Yeah, so what I was saying is, as you all know, we're under the Dillon Rule in Virginia, so we can only do so much in moving around these entities that we are allowed to create. So it's difficult to try to find a path to reduce the number of members from 10 to 5. I think the, it appears to me the best option is to, is to not reappoint people to their positions until we reduce the number to 5. And that will take two years. In 20, 2021, we would eliminate two physicians. In 2022, January 1, 2022, we would eliminate three. That would, that would mean there were, there were five physicians stood open, or filled, five physicians filled. You could eliminate those five that are not filled at that point by amending your code section, because your code section now calls for 10. Now, what that doesn't do is it doesn't balance the votes between the districts. Some districts will end up having two members, and another district might have one, but it's only going to be for.
One year.
Two years.
Actually one.
Well, actually one, because you got, you got December of this year, you don't fill those two vacancies, and then you got, or January 1, or January 11, I'm sorry, that's when the term ends, and then the next year will be three. So you have one year of that. I don't think that's going to hamper the decision-making process of the commission, and the members are still on there. They still have to review everything, they have to report to you all. Now, if it's a split vote, it won't be any difference, and it's a split vote anyway. So what, what I would need, if that's the pattern you want to use, I had done a resolution before, but what I had done is strung, strung the vacancies out, so that I kept the vote count the same in every district. I'll need to do that resolution again to accomplish whatever you all want, want to do today. And then we need to have a public hearing on it, because the resolution's going to need to create the concept of what you want to do, then we've got to create the implementation of it, and then we create the new board. And we can do all that at one time, because in Virginia, you can have resolute, you can have amendments to code sections that become effective later on. So I think we need to do the whole thing at one time, and the final, just, the final And the final, just, the final appointments would be in a, a year, a year away. And you could stagger those if you wanted to.
Can you, if only 5, if, if somebody were traveling, somebody consistently had a new job in Northern Virginia, something where there was a, is there any opportunity for an alternate or anything on that? Or, I mean, I know it, we, issues where there was, certainly lately they have, we've had some still not taken training. But I don't want to put, I don't want to put us in a position a year and 3 months from now where now we're back to where, you know, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, the code says you can have not less than 5.
Got it, so you have 5.
So you have 5.
And you don't have to have 3 to have an official meeting? You have to, 3, you have 3, okay.
But remember, your, your earlier discussion was, we want to select people, we want to take the training.
Right.
And will be available.
Yes.
I think you really need to set that standard.
Right.
Because if you, if you have too many other options, and I don't know about, at this point, whether or not you can have substitutes standing by like we've done on some of the appointments.
I think if you, if you were at only at 5, the, the line that reads not performing tasks or not, not maintaining, there was a line in their, in their vials that said what they had to maintain. If you got down to 5, meetings and training would have to be a priority, because if you had somebody that refused to do either one of those, you would need to enact that.
And that was earlier discussion. We want to appoint people that are going to be trained, ready to go, and understand.
You know, the, the response from members of the planning commission in our joint meeting was, was very refreshing. I think that we also have to keep in mind that, that there may be, there may be also a need of some time to see how, to see how both districts and members of that, of that commission, of the committee feel about this. If, if people went into swing, into full swing, we might want, we might want to honor that.
And I think you don't have to really address it till January, because we, as long as we didn't do the initial, as long as January, we didn't do the real fast appointments, we could address it in January and have it completed by February. So I, I'm in agreement to let's get 60 days to talk about it internally and talk about it through the planning commission, our appointees, and then in January will be the time we'd have to act anyway. I think we'd all be in agreement not to just, not to throw somebody on the table January 1st, right? Let's, and then let's play it out in January.
Okay.
Okay, but now we have an option.
We can see exactly.
We didn't have an option.
Any further?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Get your instruction.
Appreciate it. Sure. We move forward to the review of proposed solar regulations.
Rebecca, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, great. So I sent over a draft from the meeting last time when there were some concerns that were brought up. Those being concerned with the panels at the end of their life or if they're damaged, not just for the utility scale facilities, but also small and medium scale disposal. And there were also concerns about the migratory path and that there wasn't a specific number that had to be achieved for that. It was only referring to the wildlife resources for review. And then there was also concern on setbacks along waterways. So I sent over a, those changes as it's tracked in the document that you received. The first change is in that 125-73B, number 5, which says that the panels or pieces thereof from the property shall be disposed of outside of Page County and through a viable recycling method and in accordance with federal and state law. So that was added regarding the small and medium scale solar facilities. And then the next item of change is in 125-76B, B, which speaks to the minimum setbacks, and this is to cover that waterway concern. And so what I did here was said that they have to be from the edge of the Shenandoah River, Topsville Creek and Pass from Stream. They have to be at least 200 feet away. And certainly there, if there are other creeks, streams, those types of things that I have overlooked, you can edit back that, again, what you need there. The, how I came up with the 200 feet, I took a look at some of the topography, just kind of considering, okay, the gentleman is, you know, commuting kayak accidents down the Shenandoah River, you know, which their visibility want to be at different points down the river, can exceed this, you know, thinking from sort of a tourism, recreation perspective. Also concerned that this is, you know, can be a lot of wildlife disturbance and to, you know, provide that distance with, you know, environmental concerns in mind. I looked at the, at the peak bay, because, you know, they are all about protecting their waters. And so what they do is not the 100 foot, but they also have coverage requirements, which is not part of this. It's just strictly by distance. So I wanted to increase that a bit. Also considering what's already in the ordinance here, we already add 200 feet from, you know, historical and, and cultural resources. So trying to, you know, keep things somewhat consistent, also, you know, on the, the system on property line, it's at 200 feet. So that's why I inserted that here as a unique answer to that question. And then you go down to the bottom of that page on item J, that's talking about the wildlife corridors. And then was to say that there needs to be at least 1 access corridor for, per 50 acres of acreage coverage. And that those access corridors for the wildlife have to be 25 feet in width. And this kind of plays into the, considering the streams and waterways as well. If there, if there's some, you know, lesser known stream, that's typically where these wildlife corridors are going to be anyway. But just to make sure they're staying off of those, that there is enough, you know, room for water flow and animals to travel. We listed, you know, 25 feet width there for that.
This is the look that you presented with the, with the, and you can't see me, but this is the look of not a square facility, but a, of broken up for the wildlife and, and the habitat, correct?
Correct.
So that's the modern way of doing it, I guess, the new. Okay, thank you.
And then one other change is down underneath emission A, 125-77A6. I just added there, having materials, getting back to this concept about recycling, making sure, staying believe as, as you all discussed. I did put there that we had those materials, panels or pieces thereof, for clarification.
One thing, I have a question for the board. On that first thing she said is small solar panels for residential use couldn't be disposed of in the county. So how small, I mean, if you have 1 on your house, you couldn't, you'd have to take it to another county to get rid of it? If you had 1 out in field for the solar electric fence, you couldn't, I mean, is that?
Not a solar light.
So, I mean, so you shove it in a black bag like everybody else? I'm, I'm just saying, I, I just, when you have that in there, does that concern any of you at all, or is that, do you have any solar at your house yet? I don't know.
We have a couple of small solar lights and 1 for residential.
You know, I said all, but what I'm meaning is small fail, medium fail, utility fail.
Utility, okay, okay. So is it, it's clear, it's clear not residential or homeowners? It's, it's not residential homeowners or, right, that we see on TV, everybody's?
Well, it, it, it could be someone who, who puts a solar panel on their, you know, pickup house or, you know, something like that. Or on their home, that if it meets the definition for a small fail. Now, if it's just a solar light, no, that doesn't meet the definition of, of small fail.
But we would need to start the application for a citizen to come in and put 1 on their house. We would need to have that on the application that you couldn't dispose of it in our, you know what I mean, Tracy?
We already do that.
It's already on there, they can't dispose it at our camp, okay?
Correct.
All right. That's, that's.
We, we say it, I mean, there's nothing in the code. It could be, I guess it, it could have been challenged, but we, we encourage them not to do it at this point.
Okay.
I think it would behoove the county to find some way to get into a network picture, recycle the sewers. Certainly have, for our citizens that do have it on their homes or on their farm buildings or whatever. When it comes to the end of the life of that, we need to make sure that there is some way that they don't have to either dump it in their own fields.
Right.
Or try to move it into the landfill and crash it back. So it would be better for us to, where we can make sure Jeff is gone.
Yeah, I know.
That we can find some way to assist them in a recycling method that we can do about the county by, or even early.
I think if we change Jeff's name, he might be able to figure out how to make money from it, you know? But, but I just think that's concerning, you know, like I said, I'm sure there's people that are looking into it and thinking about it. And if they're doing the right thing for, for themselves and our community, I don't want them to then.
Well, the school sign, sign that Greedy Hill got wiped out, where solar panels got reused, where that went.
Right.
Is there, is there any, is there any indication in this, whether it's about the cost per panel, the way in which fees will be generated or?
That's our end with the.
Is it a separate?
The.
I want to be sure, because that was, that was a sticking point in, in some of the discussion last time around, where it didn't, wasn't, seemed to be relevant, but really wasn't. But it's something to be.
Now, now that we, I guess when we looked at that, we didn't separate commercial, industrial from residential. So now we can probably look at that ordinance and what makes it right for a residential. One panel may not be the same thing for.
Right.
So, so we were new, but we never even had an application before when we addressed that. Now would be probably the time to go back and, that's not gonna be done in one quick meeting, but that's probably the thing. Once we get something like this, we should look at the fee schedule.
Right, and that fee structure, you don't have to have a public hearing to figure that out, you can just change it at a meeting.
Can we go back up and envision another one that we've already talked about, I mean, you talked about on the panel, the wildlife?
We don't, oh, you're talking about just for the solar part of the wildlife?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I didn't see it till I was in writing. But I mean, 50 acres, you got, over 50 acres, you gotta have a 45 foot width strip thing, I think, for wildlife, if that's right?
Well, that's unresponsible. VDOT even does that now when they consider how they build roads and stuff, I mean.
For a 200 acre site, you're gonna have what, 4?
Well, if you got a 200 acre site and it's only 20 acres wide, you take out the corridor that no animal, so then you're, then you're impacting traffic. You reroute the deer in Page County to go 1 through 1 across the road at one place, it can be very dangerous. So it's kind of being, it, it's not something that I just came up with, it's something that VDOT and everybody's been to one lately. I just, I mean, that's, that's why you do it, is so it does, you're not, you take 200 acre strip from here to, you know, whatever, 200 acres is a little, is a large chunk of property and you don't let deer, bear, anything else transpass through there, they're gonna impact the ends heavily. So that's, that's why, I mean, I don't think it's anything we're doing, I think that's what, what's.
It's good sense.
Right, Rebecca, Rebecca, that's what you said, you, that North, other places, North Carolina and other places have went to this after they've seen the, seen the impact, is that correct?
Yeah, so other places have, have done a lot of things. They've reduced their fence height so that the deer can actually jump over them. Or if they jump through that, if they raise the fence height, they do, yeah, make sure that they have these corridors for them to traverse through. Some even do fences with small, or, I mean, larger wire at the bottom, so that the small animals can go through that way, things like that. Yeah, there, there's a lot of those.
I understand how it looks, but I think others were a little complex. That's what I mean.
So if you all don't have any other proposed changes that you want to talk about, I have, I was asked last time about some of the maps. And so I did ask Josh, our GIS coordinator, to, to come tonight so that he could show you the maps. And so that way if you have questions, he's actually here to answer them.
Well, I do, I'm something.
Which, so there was many numbers on the maps. Do you have the latest and greatest for us, or you, one that you recommend that we talk about, what number?
Um, well, so we created with the Verby Group 5 maps.
Right.
But the 5th map was really just a, a copy of map 4, just showing it all under that.
Okay.
So that you could, you could see the, the difference, just the white area that. That's really the final map that was at that current stage of criteria. We've had some other criteria added. And there's a map 6 that kind of showed the criteria, I believe, of Mr. Guzzi and Matt Ford on Creekville, or out there, the US Hallways.
Right. So you technically, because I asked the question.
Sure.
You technically, if I'm correct, you have got us having availability of 2,635 acres?
That's correct. Can I ask some breakdown of that if you'd like to see it?
I think we have it, we have it from us.
Yeah.
And, so my thought was, we voted down a mega, what we considered a mega site. So by allowing 2,635, if we did it, if a board 10 years from now had 6,000, I mean, 2,634 and 1 acre left, that they can revisit it. But that opens up the door, this option opens up the door for 2,635 acres, correct?
If you look at the map, you see how that, that acreage is spread out throughout the county.
Right, sure, yes.
If there's that much acreage available on this. Yes.
But, but it may be 20 years and they've only done 200 acres somewhere.
Right, right.
I just think, I think, so I, I know it looked, when, when we, when we seen it, and I had the first question, I'm like, holy cow, you, now you, but when you, when you get down to it, 2,635 acres is not a small amount of solar panels in our county, that's a lot.
I can't speak to the viability of.
We're just asking you to maximize.
Sure, but as in, if we're, most of these questions are gonna be answered, or we have to answer in a case like this, like site-specific, I can't speak to that directly. But if you were to zoom to any one of these clusters that you can generally see, question comes up, are we actually going to eliminate a solar panel or a solar utility scale solar facility within this block because of 2 by, 2 by 4.5 foot by 2.5 feet, you know, slope difference, slightly higher than 10%. Right. That isn't, I mean, we, we maybe may not, that's something probably the commission will have to do. But you see where the clusters are. And I would just, I would just add to that, if I may, just, that I did today, look at the, the US Highway 340 and also the criteria available for, added for streams and river.
Right.
That would be 2,345.
But still, 2,300. And then the board at that time could, I mean, my, and my thing, I was saying, is we finally got, after 2 years of planning commission, to vote 9 to 1 to accept an ordinance. We've now looked at it, made a few small changes, and we do have an ordinance that allows 2,400, 2,600 amount of acres. Our grandchildren could address it later, I mean, you know, it could be addressed later on, it's not, it's an ordinance, right? Anything, I mean, anything can be addressed later on.
Change it.
Change it, but you did, but you've taken the stand to say Page County is not available for 4,000, 400,000 acres of solar panels. That's where I think we've all, if we voted down the big one, now we know, now we know what we're available for.
And where?
And where, and where, right, so.
But, but the where is typically determined by, if it's a small scale utility, that doesn't really matter. But a, a large scale one, such as the one that was proposed out here, was based on the transmission lines, not on the land. It was, it was its location with regard to how it would be, how the power would be, would be, would be taken out of here. It didn't, and there are only so many places for a, for, for an industrial scale, you know, a large facility. I, I'm just, I'm just most concerned about, you know, if we want to maintain, if we want to maintain something of, of a, of a sense of who we are, ordinances that allow by right could be dangerous. Meaning somebody can just go in and, they can go and build it there. And there are, and there are maybe 4 or 5 very, very specific reasons why it's a bad idea. But they're gonna put it there because that's where the transmission line is, or that's, you know, it's, it's convenient for the, for the, for the builder of, of, of the project. This is my, this is my feeling about, about, about an ordinance.
But I think.
Is that it, it opens the door to somebody just doing what they want to do.
But I think, if you look at it, Page County is 208, 200,0890 acres, correct?
Yes, that's how we were having, yes.
So we eliminated, we, we're down to 1% now, after 2 years of mess, 1% of the county is open for business for, for solar, if that be the case. Before, we were wide open, it was a mess, everybody was fighting and screaming, now we've got the planning commission to agree and we reserve 1%. Is that kind of, do you look at it?
That's, Mr. Chairman, also, I think.
That's, Mr. Chairman, also, I think after our discussion in our last meeting, it was pretty evident that we were talking about growth patterns and areas for residential development, you know, that type of thing. Some of that already is, was addressed on this, because, I mean, we've got to remember that if we're going to try to develop around towns where there's existing utilities, then some of that's going to be automatically restricted anyway, which should have been, you know, and we weren't, that wasn't necessarily... And I think some of the other things we could do is just look it down in that regard, and it's going to be more revenue brought in from residential growth in some areas and looking for solar, larger solar facilities.
I think we've seen some information in the last few days that the impact that it could have had on our appraisals, if we had it against an industrial area. We had some nice houses that could have been lower dramatically and so... But I, I think, Josh, thank you for what you done, I think you, I think you, you know, you've certainly carved out something that so far, somebody's agreed on, the planning committee's agreed on it.
I think it's important to know where.
Right.
Probably what it is.
Right, right. Before it was 200,890.9 acres.
What? You said it's still 4,300 acres.
2,300 acres.
Right.
And the reason I, the reason I want to emphasize that, if I may, is, and Keith is, Mr. Goozy is, is speaking to this, most of that acreage is spread out in, in, you know, you know, many skilled sections aren't viable for solar.
Just like Dr. Phoenix just said, you can't build a solar farm just anyplace because you have to have a transmission line to take the power out, and that's the problem.
Well, these are, these are boutique...
You can build a mission with, Keith, and, and these people that built these things is going to have to get access for, for a transmission line off of somebody to get in there to get that power out.
But if I'm correct, 10 acres would still be a viable location in this pretty ordinance.
As you can see, yes, it's right there, that red in line that you're seeing right there...
Right, it's 10 acres. So the boutique, small, medium sized, that we all voted for, I mean, that's, it's still, it's still open to that.
Sure.
It's not open to the 1,000 acres that everybody can see from the park in 340.
What are the criteria, you're saying here is actually a certain distance, it must be within a certain distance of that utility line?
That's covered.
That's covered, so...
So all those are viable?
Yeah.
No, I'm saying, your, your question was not valid. He says that this map shows every, these are all in existence to the transmission line.
Well, is that, are there yellow marks on that, is that the transmission line?
Yeah, that's, and that's unofficial data, but that is mapped by us using the ARL imagery and...
Okay.
So that's all the valuable spots.
Final.
Does that make sense? Because that was your question.
No, my question has, was, was separate from that, it had to do with, with, with by right and by, by S U P. It was really a separate question.
And everything else, the, the additional 200,000 acres is available with S U P, right? You can always apply, I mean, I'm not saying we're going to approve it, right, I mean, but it's always an S U P, is that correct?
That's a question for Tracy.
Right, Tracy?
Only if it meets by criteria.
So that's, the ordinance would stop that day one, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, nobody could even apply for a variance or S U P?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, that's it?
Correct.
Until the, until the ordinance or the, or this was amended or changed?
Correct. I think Rebecca had something she was going to say.
I, I was just going to say what you all are discussing, which is that, yes, what is directed here is kind of that first hurdle, we can say, for the applicant to say, okay, where does Page County, we want to put, you know, a utility scale solar in Page County, where is Page County going to allow us to do that? So by the text that's drafted here, in essence, they will end up looking at the map that, that Josh has created, this number six, and go, okay, these are, you know, the areas, well, this, you know, bit of land is too small, this bit of land, the owner isn't interested, you know, they're going to have to we through and then, you know, determine their location, and then after that is the next hurdle, to make that application, design the project the way the ordinance is, has required it, and then come before you through that specialty permit process and, and get your approval. So several hurdles here for the applicant, you know, Josh has done a great job of this, administering this in a map and, and giving some numbers, but he's also correct in that these numbers aren't the hard facts either. There is, you know, still could be less acreage, um...
You can have neighborhoods complain, or you can have neighborhoods...
Would actually give the sign of marks, what an applicant would be interested in.
She's so fine. When, when she's, when, when an applicant would come before us and Tracy would send out the letters, you still may have neighbors ask not to do it, we still may come before us that it's a high-value area, we may still have come before us that it's a tourism area, it still may be in the view share of Page, you know, but this at least now opens it up to receive them, and, and, and this follows suit with what we voted and put in place when we voted one for one and we didn't vote for the other, this kind of follows suit. I mean, and when I'm putting them to the ballot, but that's kind of what it is. And the planning committee did a nine-one vote on, yep, this is kind of where we see Page County going.
To be clear, I have no agenda either way, I just want to make sure that we know what's where.
Right.
Yes, absolutely. The fact is, the fact is that...
Just quiet.
Every, every applicant is going to have to have an engineered site plan that's going to be better than I can do on a county scale.
But you, but you helped the, you helped the landowners and the utilities point them in the right direction if they were going to come to Page County in the future.
I hope so.
Yeah, thank you.
Cool.
Further questions?
But I think based on this though, Nathan, all we would still do is take it to public hearing and...
Thank you, John.
Still have to do the open statement.
Right, to the open, right, so I mean, it's not, we're not, it's just making a decision, we're just moving it down the road.
Right, so if you would like to set your public hearing, you can do that, it always would need to sound 15.
Mr. Chairman, I, if there's a couple points I'm looking through that, I would like to just mention also, I made a point before about the industrial, the company coming in and what they, that had the requirements there for them to have a bond, but there was no provision if that company went belly up or whatever, there was no way to cover. And I think there should be something where the owner also, the owner of the property is ultimately responsible, because it's, it's not something that I would feel comfortable with unless it's clarified in some way where this may fall back to be the responsibility of county taxpayers, you know, someone else that was left behind. I know there've been cases of that already, one was in Maryland Eastern Shore where one walked away from it, and you should see the pictures where the panels are still set and I could ask for a little walk around it, and there's debates going on there as to who's supposed to clean it up. And I, I just want, I, I think it's important that, as this goes forward, we make sure that it's clear that the property owner does not escape responsibility, once they get an older property, that, that the people they contract with is not upheld during the party, then in some way, then they're going to be responsible. Now, Nathan, is there anything to protect us in that regard?
In what regard is...
Well, I'm talking about, just because a company can have a bond on the property, I mean, a bond on, a decommission. I just want to make sure that, that if that does not even cover it for some reason, or there's some other issue, that ultimately it falls back still on the property.
Certainly you can make that a condition of the, of the application, that the landowner has to be a participant in the decommission.
I just want to make sure that...
But I haven't seen, I mean, I haven't been involved in the production of the current document before you, which is generally, I would say, that they, that that could be one of the conditions.
Like I said, my main concern is that in 20 years from now, and we don't have our taxpayers on the hook, cleaning up a couple of these, if they're, if they are approved to come in, that's, that's just...
If a company X took out a bond from Travelers Insurance, and they had the bond, and they paid the fee, you pay a percentage of a bond, it's an insurance policy, and if they paid that and Travelers held that, no, held that bond for 20 years, and something were to happen and that company went out of business, wouldn't Travelers still, that bond be valid?
It would be, absolutely.
So, so technically, you know, them going out of business, that should not impact, as long as Tracy and, and everybody's validated the bond is real and the bond's in place, the company went out of business wouldn't impact the bond.
That's right.
Right, so it's, I'm saying, the bond's forward.
Unless, unless the bond had to be drawn down to do something with it.
What Alan's saying...
Is adding the landowner to that bond.
Right.
Which, which probably is going to, I mean, that's fine, that's only, that's one sentence of verbiage, adding the landowner to the bond or the bond in, in separate to the landowner, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare do a 50-50 because right it to, add the landowner would have to be added to the bond or have his own equipment bond, whatever, that, that's the only way you're 100% protected, kind of, right?
What Alan's saying, if you got the bond, and this thing goes belly up, if somebody comes in and cleans it up, which that bond does not cover that, then the property owner is responsible for what's left, not the county.
But we should have our due diligence that the bond is enough to clean it up.
You don't know that.
It doesn't always have...
Well, I know, so, but that's when you build a construction, if, if they require us to have a $10 million bond to do the construction and stuff gets belly up, I mean, somebody didn't guess it right, you know? I mean, it's, that's, that, that happens every day, bonds are set and we hope we set them at the right now, if you want to find out who's setting the bonds and...
I agree with Alan on that, I wouldn't fall back on the taxpayers of the county, 25 years down the...
And make it double the excavated amount, but I mean, there's no other way to protect you, a bond's a bond.
And the other issue, Mr. Chairman, that I would like to bring forward is that, in there, it talks about, in the ordinance, about buffer zones and plantings and that type of thing. Again, from observing some that are already going up around the state, they do not do the plantings before construction, and I think really that if it is approved, the plantings ought to go up immediately as they spark, otherwise, they can do a lot of construction with a lot of issues there that the people are, you know, Nathan, people are, the neighbors are subjected to, whether it's property owners or whatever individually, and it would be better to make sure that those plantings are going to thrive and to exist, and to do that to begin with, it's under construction, that's the one way to do it. So I, if there's to be something put in there to do that before, I just, I think it makes more sense to, to put it up front as opposed to saying it's, we've completed the way we're going to have plantings or a lot of, it just won't make sure it's more...
Well, I think, I think you, I've addressed that several times, and, and the one we drive by when we go north of here, they have two-foot tall trees, six years in, that die and replaced every year with a two-foot tall tree, so you're never, I mean, Virginia, you know, August, right, you plant a new tree and August comes along and it's 98 degrees for 30 days, it wipes out what they planted, by this and other ones, and Rebecca, you might be able to talk to it, all it puts them in is they have to go back and replant. So we're never really getting the view share, we're never really getting accomplished what we said, mostly, right? Is there anything Rebecca you would recommend with that? Because that's something we see as a neighboring county that seems like that's going on in real life.
Okay, so a couple of things, and I'd like to go back to the decommissioning for a moment to clarify these things, that is in the draft, that I think covers some of the concerns that I'm hearing, and that is, there is text here that says that the, the bond has to be recalculated and updated every five years, so that makes sure, you know, if, if values are changing or costs are changing, that that does change and the bond will reflect that. It also says that the bond has to be put up before the building permit is received. So before anything, you know, really starts happening on the site, the bond should be received by the county so that you have it in hand. So that's just a couple of things that I wanted to point out there. As far as the landscaping requirements, there are, you know, as well as you can, you know, require maintenance funds for them so that, you know, if trees are planted and then they die and they're not replacing them, then you can, you know, pull that bond to, to say, hey, all right, we're going to, you know, take this, replace this landscaping that you have and come back and fix. So that's something that's in here that you can utilize as well.
Rebecca, there's, the point I was making is getting the trees planted prior to starting construction and, like, ground disturbance and everything, because in that case, either natural screening, which they say in some cases you may have plenty of trees and shrubs and stuff going up along the property line, as opposed to not really being identified as to when it's supposed to start or when it's supposed to occur. I know plantings, if they die, is one thing, that's like, the point is when, when the screen is initially started.
I don't believe, I was trying to take a quick peek here, and I, I don't believe that it, it says that it needs to be installed prior to construction.
I would say after approval, after approval, it's formatted prior to construction, it should be, not enough to be in.
That could be tough on a construction situation, Alan.
No, no, I would say all the way around the property, but I mean, I would certainly say the screening area is important, I mean, you don't have to be tearing up all along the edges so much with your, depends on where you're going.
I certainly know from construction that they need an open area to build a fence, and then they have to leave an area open for coming, going, egress and egress, so...
I would suggest for that, then, to do it through your, your specialty permit process that, you know, has it as a condition, that identifies specific areas, if, you know, if some particular neighbor's home and they're, you know, concerned about that, then you can require, you know, that strip be landscaped prior to construction, or if there's a road or something like that.
That makes sense.
You know, that's something that you can work into the condition permitting.
That makes sense, if you're fine with that, we do it the S U P for you.
This is kind of one of the questions I have, you know, these facilities are built by developers and usually they're financed by investor groups that are looking for a return on net asset, when are we going to get our money back? And what I'm seeing for solar, in order for it to be profitability, there needs to be enough panels on-site to generate X amount of dollars or X amount of tax credits for it to be profitable. And what I'm seeing, at the sizes that are set with 200 acres with the wildlife screen and things of that nature, and looking at the GIS map and how close we can get them to the grid, we probably won't have any opportunities for this type of solar in Page County.
There are only two viable sites, from what I understand, there certainly are viable areas where one could put it in, but...
But, but, that's, that's all fine, well, being able to put it in there, but being able to put it in there from a developer standpoint and be profitable, they're not going to put it there if they can't make money. And I think, I think that we have written this ordinance to shoot any solar moving forward and ahead in Page County.
Well, technically, we did that with the vote, right? We, we put in dam acres, we approved dam acres, it fit the criteria, it would work, it's, it's approved, the ordinance would reflect dam acres. They did it, they still haven't developed it, they still haven't done anything, so now why are we, why are we thinking, and the planning committee looked at that, and the planning committee said, okay, they're not, Page County's not going to vote one through at 1,000 acres, so if, I mean, the ordinance is giving them the guidelines to what we will and will not do. The vote also did that, right? When we voted that night, it did that. So if 10 years from now dam acres has never materialized, that's, that kind of shows us that, you know, what we did. This, this again opens it up for 2,300 acres, because we're not engineers, right? This is Josh's recommendations, this 2,300 acres. If that completely goes through, then we have another meeting and we, we start voting again. If it doesn't, then we, we also realized nobody was coming here anyway. So I, I think, I commend the planning committee, after two years, the Berkeley Group got its, got involved, people got some stuff done, we got something in front of us, it reflects our vote, plain and simple, it reflects our vote. So we all voted that way that night and we've all had no heartaches, we, we'd like to see dam acres happen, it still hasn't happened.
That's because of connectivity, that's because, that's the relationship between S V E C and...
That, any, any site in Page County is going to have that issue, isn't it?
No, I don't believe so.
I think it'll be an option.
I believe it's a very, very specific connectivity, because it's with Shenandoah Valley Electric, it's not with whatever it is in...
That's the problem, I bet.
Yeah, it's a, it's an exorbitant fee and they can't come to terms.
But I'm sure they talked before they did the whole...
And that the, that the facility there is, is not so large that, that they can put, they feel they can put the bill, from what we might understand, from S V E C's side.
But that just shows you the company that we were dealing with, if they didn't talk to S V E C before they applied for this permit and spent this kind of money, they rented the land from the landowner, that all this stuff is taking place, I'm sure they talked to Shenandoah Valley Electric, so yes, maybe they're not coming to agreement, but if that company did all this work and spent all this money and didn't even talk to the people they're hooking up to, that shows you what we were entertaining, right?
That's true.
That's the main.
Further comment, further action here?
Well, if you would like to go ahead and schedule the public hearing, which will be your next step in getting this approved, that your first opportunity to have that would be on December 15.
I'd like to see what the citizens, we've done all this work, the planning committee's done all that work, I'd like to see what the citizens' likes to see about this round.
My question, oh, man, can we set a public hearing?
My question, oh man, can we set a public hearing with the restrictions that we have right now, Governor?
Yes, we, we can still have a public hearing, but what we'll have to do, because you were really only supposed to have eight people in this room in addition to us, with people six feet apart, we can set the chairs up and we'll just have to have groups of people, if people want to speak, we're just going to have to do it that way.
Leroy just brought them in from outside as they recall, right?
Yeah.
It can be virtual, it can be virtual. I think the...
Just maximum 25 people.
Hopefully, I've been.
So it'll be televised or, or broadcast to the internet?
I just, I don't...
We couldn't do it at a school. No, no, schools out.
It's maximum 25 people at a gathering, so that's the same, we have to have separate rooms.
I think if we couldn't usher people in to speak and we didn't have it where we could, at least Facebook Live, which we did that one time, then we probably ought to hold off, but if we can, that would probably ought to be in the motion that we make it available for public hearing in that fashion. I'm fine with putting that in the motion just to make sure. Mr. Pauls, that's a good idea?
We just have to have extra staff here to call.
Yep, unfortunately, but that's the only way to go to the parking lot and say, Ms. Mary, you're ready to speak.
Well, I mean, this ain't something that's got to be done tomorrow.
No, but, I mean, look, COVID might be around for the next six months, so this may be the way we have to do it.
Right.
So I think you made a good point, though, if we put that in the motion, at least everybody will have a say.
So you want it?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with making that motion to move this to public hearing and, and make sure that we abide by the COVID and, and also available for all citizens to speak.
Accessible.
Accessible, and, and I think we not only broadcast it as well.
But half the internet can't, don't have it, like it's accessible.
It is what it is. I mean...
Did I miss something?
I bet you everybody that's passionate about solar will find a McDonald's or somewhere to set for them to watch it, they did last time. But I, I'm fine with moving, everybody's done a lot of work on it, I'm fine with moving it to see what our citizens have to say. And if we feel that we can't get good representation that night, I wouldn't move for it.
Yeah, I'm just asking, because we have to advertise this at least two weeks ahead of the time, so if you, if nothing changes two weeks out, I mean, it, it's kind of hard to advertise and say, if we can meet these requirements, and then if something changes, I mean, if you're okay with us doing it like this and having people in another room and outside and we can go and get people, I just want to make sure that when we're going to advertise and we spend money to do that, that we're going to have to hear it.
Do you need a motion or just a consensus?
They need a motion to set the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to move the solar ordinance to public hearing, as presented tonight with the recommendations and way Rebecca's added the, the...
On the day December...
What is the date?
December 15th.
December 15th, according to all COVID rules, regulations, restrictions, and accessibility to our citizens.
Do we have a motion, Mr. Guzzi?
Say it.
Second, Mr. Lauterbach. Any further discussion?
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach?
Yes.
Mr. Struig?
Yes.
All right, we, Mr. Leroy, please.
...an auto repair facility and accessory structure located at 1544 Conover Drive in Stanley. The property currently has two active poultry houses, a mobile home, which is used as residential dwelling, and an existing accessory structure where the proposed business would take place. Pursuant to 12510 B22 of the zoning ordinance, it does require a special use permit, hence the reason he submitted the application. He has reached out to me, they do not have any objections, he does not have to upload the insurance or anything for that. They, he's reached out to building department, there are no objections from the building official, and also the health department. He did have to upgrade his sewer system, which he has already done and has signed off on the end of the bus. I won't read the comprehensive plan stuff, that's in your memo. The planning commission did have a public hearing on this on October the 27th. They did recommend approval, six to zero. So at this point, I'm just requesting that we have, have the, you all have the public hearing on December the 15th.
I moved it to Page County in order to supervise the public hearing on the above listed special use permit application at the December the 15th, 2020 referendum meeting, and direct staff to provide adequate notice of such hearing in accordance with the Code of Virginia. 15 dash 2.2 dash 222, no fault.
Say it. And most of Mr. Pauls? Second, Mr.?
Discussion, I think, can we make sure that he's, with the amount of people that may or may not be there for the solar, can we make sure that this is at the beginning of the agenda to be respectful at this time?
Good idea.
One, wait two hours to...
Any further comment?
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach?
Yes.
Mr. Struig?
Yes.
Okay, we're open to public comment?
We have five speakers on that. John Rogerson?
You'll hear me with this thing, through the mic. I want to talk about a favorite subject, the landfill situation. First of all, the landfill was built offline because we were told by certain people that it had to be closed because it didn't have a liner. Well, it so happens that they were land, they were grandfather. If you, they, they realized, even G Q realized, if you can't put a liner underneath tons and tons of the trash, so therefore you could use it until it's land used up. So we built one. We're up there on a hill, got a gill, that's a nice one. We're up on a hill, we built it in a bad place because there's three streams that run underneath there that supply water to quarters of the county. So we go up there on the hill, we dug this hole. Right now, it costs about $2.5 million to dig a hole like that. If you put your trash in it, so many years it lasts. But if you start taking in other counties' trash, like Warren's County, it fumbles up. They're putting in more trash than we are, and now we're going to take Fracka Haddick's trash. So we're going to have even less percentage of trash in there belonging to us. Landfill is going to last a lot less time, and then what do you got to do? You got to dig another hole, that's $2.5 million. Warren County will give you a ten cents to help you. Fracka Haddick County won't give you any money to help. The leachate problems, the methane problems, they're your problems, they're not their problems. When we were having the other landfill company in here, we had seven accidents with the trucks coming over the mountains, both ways. One of them was over in a national park. You think they didn't have a fence? The trash blew all over the park. We had a guy killed, a citizen of Page County killed by one of the trucks. Now we're getting a roll-off truck to go over the mountain to take the trash for the same price that we're giving Warren County. Now I understand why we did that contract. It took me to get a FOIA to find out. But the reason they signed that contract with Warren County was because we wanted a loan to pay off the money we had to pay to National Waste Services to get them out of here, which is $13 million. We had to store cash stream, so the cash stream was Warren County's trash. Now back in the day when there was a group of us fighting this landfill, it was, it took $45 to $50, all costs, to put a ton of trash in the ground. You think it's going down? It's got to be up in the 60s, essentially. So Warren County's taking their trash in from their citizens for $60 and $65 a ton, handing it off to us for $34. So we are subsidizing Warren County. Because we can't put it in the ground for $34. Because nobody's carrying the cost of the airspace, that's all we own is airspace. The cost of the airspace, the cost of digging the hole, the cost of modern closing that landfill, and digging another hole, and monitoring for 30 years. Warren County, Fracka Haddick County are not going to help us one time. They're pretty clear. Now I've visited landfills all around the county, probably around the state, and what I was told by the people that operate them is, if you can take, if you can ship your trash out, that's the best. If you, if you want to keep it yourself, dig a hole, put your own distance of trash in there, charge them enough, and break even. If you can break even, you're doing good. This story about you can make money off of trash is not true. The only one that makes money is the haulers. And we have a contract with, with Warren County that says that we have to take their trash for 13 years at a certain price.
Thank you, Mr. Rogerson.
What?
Thank you. There's three minutes.
I hit?
Yeah, you go on, you've come well over it. Thank you.
Right.
Beth Snyder?
I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. Thank you to the supervisors who brought up the logistic problems. I would hope that for the public hearing, you know, maybe you could consider it someplace else. I know you said the schools are closed, but are the, they can't open it up to have a meeting there. I mean, we had like 100 people come for some of those meetings. I would hope that you would consider it, and if you're not, you know, we've, we've talked about the camera coming into play for months, and clearly Rebecca, Tab could talk over the phone, over the thing, why can't they have citizens talk over that? Very hard to have your comments in writing by noon time when you don't know what else is going to be said and done in those meetings. For the fees, those were lowered for urban grip, so I would hope that you would put the fees back in somewhere before you get the ordinance passed and open up that moratorium because once those applications start flooding in at your $10 panel, that's going to be bad. Thank you.
Kathy Greck?
Good evening, everyone. I have two comments. The first is that the whole, the role of an ordinance is to protect the interests of the citizens and of the county, not the pocketbooks of potential investors. I think that's a really important point to make. Secondly, I would like to comment that on the map that was presented to you tonight, if you refer to the footnote, it will show you a reflection of 100% exclusion of protected farmland, prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. I would draw your attention to Section 12576B7 of the ordinance that only restricts 50% of the farmland. So therefore, the map that was shown to you in that particular respect was not accurate. Now, I will agree that it is difficult to show on a map something that is site-specific, but again, refer to the footnote on the map and you will realize that 100% of the farmland of prime, prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance that is protected was excluded on that map. I can therefore conclude that the number that was mentioned, 2,345 acres, which was mentioned as available, is therefore not accurate either, because it's only 50% of the farmland that is site-specific that will be, you know, excluded. So please take that map with a pinch of salt, or ask to see one that does not, that does not exclude 100% of the farmland before you make your minds up. Thank you.
Rod Graves?
It's one thing on your, your review that you, proposal review you had tonight that I think needs to have a little attention, is when you talked about repairing areas, smaller branches and, you know, place the lakes after a certain size, versus like Lake Area, it has, it's got a lot, fair amount of lakes in the county that need to be included in that map, they need to probably be thought about. Considering that everything runs downhill, especially if you have high elevations involved, you have toxins that become present, they're going to go downhill and get into our, our waterways and we don't want that. And I think that's the whole measure to begin with, is, as I recall, a concern for that. Second thing that I would like to suggest to you all, we all talked about the, the trees, you know, we're going to have to replace the trees if, if they die, good thing. How do we enforce that? That's one question I had. The other suggestion I have, strong suggestion I have, is that we have rolling berms, would be, you know, five, six high, it would roll, kind of like, you know, kind of like the landscape rolls. This elevates the trees, therefore reduces the impact on the view share. I think that that would be a really good thing to think about. We've done some things like that at the caverns, it's very effective, and I've seen it done other places. I've seen it done down in Fort Oil, down at their industrial complexes down there, they have berms with trees on top, and you'll have to wait for the trees to grow or die forever. They have to be replaced, you'll see a big wide open space. So just, just a thought there. I hope it's not too late for that. I hope you would consider those two things. Another thing to consider is something I've been harping on, not continuing to harp on, our view shares during this process. The posed acres that are there are, are good. I think it's a, it's a really great way to compromise. But bear in mind, if, if all those are fulfilled, you know, you're talking about something basically the south of Shenandoah National Park. And that's the bread and butter, and it's only growing. So just consider that that's a massive thing, it's hard, it's hard to contemplate, really, quite honestly, I think, I don't think any of us here could imagine that fulfilled. So even that fulfilled is, is kind of a hard thing to contemplate in those, well, these are suggestions, and I hope you all take them as they're said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greck.
Chris Anderson?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate you all's careful consideration of the solar ordinance. I think you all have done a very good job of listening to the citizens, and I encourage you to continue incorporating the thoughts that were expressed this evening. I think the ordinance is, is getting there. As far as public access to the meetings, I encourage you all to do everything in your power to get the audio and the visual capability of recording these meetings. You all have citizens who are interested in the processes and decisions that are being made at these meetings. And I listened to the joint meeting last week, it was really difficult to hear, especially when multiple people talk. And as citizens, we do not have any way of knowing who is speaking, because, you know, there's a lot of people speaking. Yes, it would be disruptive to have to identify yourselves before you speak. However, when we're at home or in our offices and we're trying to listen, we can't tell who, which of our elected officials are expressing their thoughts. So please, double down, be a pest of the companies that are not delivering those parts to get the system in place, do whatever you have, because there are some very important decisions that are coming up with the solar ordinance in particular. And also, so I work for the Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley, and I'm looking forward to participating in the zoning and the subdivision ordinance review that's going to be coming up over the next month. We understand at the Alliance the significance of the review and the restructuring of the ordinances, and the, the impact that they will have on landowners and citizens of Page County. We also understand the regional implications of decisions made regarding maintaining and preserving our agricultural lands, guiding commercial and industrial development to appropriate areas, preserving open space, and the many other impacts. We encourage close adherence to best planning practices, Page County Comprehensive Plan, and including the involvement of citizens throughout the process. The Alliance is here to help, and do what we can, and we look forward to... The Alliance is here to help and do what we can, and we look forward to working with the county and its citizens on this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris Anderson.
That's it.
Can we move to the administrator's report?
The first thing I was going to say is I know that I sent out an email to all of you. Some of you had already participated in what was going to be the employee-funded Christmas party for the second year, and due to the governor's updated ordinance that came out, not that we're trying to stop from being able to have a larger public hearing, but the governor issued his new order which lowered the number of people allowed to gather indoors or outdoors from 250 to 25 max. So because of that, I guess we're going to, we can't have a Christmas party, obviously, because we have more than 50 people that had signed up. So I guess what we'll have to do is refund the employees or, as Mr. Foltz suggested, you know, have it at a later date. It just wouldn't be for the holidays. So I'm not sure. Do you have any thoughts on that? It's just kind of...
The governor was clear it was indoor.
No, it said indoor/outdoor.
Indoor/outdoor.
Yeah.
My suggestion for it was is that things might change, you know, daily. And instead of, you could have something in January, February.
March, April, May?
Late New Years.
Yeah.
But, you know, rather than...
I would hesitate on requesting the funds for 2021 from the employees.
Right, I know.
Maybe that would come out of the board reserve if we were to have a function. But the 2020, if you could send a memo out, maybe that we will do one when available. I know Mr. Street loves to barbecue in the midsummer.
I do.
So, but I think, Nathan, would that be okay to tell them we definitely will be doing it, or do we need to do the refund? Your kind of legal advice.
There's not a legal issue there.
Okay.
It's a moral issue. Do you think you ought to refund it? I mean, if you asked me how I would vote, I would refund the money.
And then just take the board reserve to have us something for the employees if we need to?
Yeah, yeah. And let the board have its fun, say, for whatever you do, if you have something. That'd be my...
Because that way, we don't, that way, we're not on hook for 2020 or 2021.
Right.
Okay.
That's my no vote. I mean, it's my vote that doesn't count.
It's kind of, I mean, that's what I'm saying. We all would probably vote that the county should do something for everybody if available, and so let's just, let's refund.
Right, well, and I guess before we say that, because remember in the past when we had the cookout, like, we all paid for that. You know, the board members and I paid for that for staff, so it wasn't taxpayers' money. I won't give everybody else credit. So this also was, employees paid for this.
Yeah, but there is a lot of municipalities that have a special day or different things, and it's not unheard of to do.
Right.
People that are doing a good job and been through this, so I would think citizens wouldn't mind if we had a barbecue to celebrate this thing being open. But if you could refund it now before Christmas, it kind of is a Christmas bonus back to them, and they could use it, right? They can use it, a small amount, but it's get it back to them.
Yes, they could.
All right.
So that was one thing. The other, just wanted to remind you, next week with it being Thanksgiving, the holiday schedule is the county offices close at 12:00 PM on Wednesday, and then they're closed Thursday, Friday. The other, for January 26th, January 26th, for the next joint meeting with the Berkeley Group, instead of it being at the end of February, I was able to get them to do that. I mean, if that works for you all, that is the planning commission's work session. If we could do the joint meeting on January 26th, that you all are open to that.
I think we need to move forward with that as fast as we can.
Okay. We'll get that scheduled, and then I just wanted to...
Were they okay with breaking that out, too, if they, if for some reason industrial was a headache, or something was a headache, or that last thing they presented, they could push that, but get...
Well, I asked if we could go ahead and do that in phase.
Please, please, because I think that's, we need to do that for a second.
The other thing, just to let the public know, I was notified this morning from the Judge Ritchie with the Circuit Court that we had a positive case in the Circuit Court. So the Circuit Court was closed today and will be closed tomorrow. We have disinfected the courtroom and the Circuit Court clerk's office. The Commonwealth Attorney's Office apparently closed as well. I'm not sure, they didn't contact me, so I don't know what the, what their plan is for how long they're not going to be open. Circuit Court will be reopening after tomorrow, but they do have one employee that is reporting, so she's going to be manning the ship for a while. We did have one today that we heard about, an employee in this building that had an exposure, so we've had to put that person off. And we do have an EMT that was very up close and personal exposure over the weekend from EMS situation. So we are, it's just all of a sudden, we've been really good and not having any issues, and so all of a sudden, we're getting hit. So we're just really pushing and forcing the mandates that the governor has put forth. The only other thing, some of you may have noticed, too, not something I usually share with you, is a report that Tracy does for me, so that I can see, you know, what's going on in building and zoning, and as far as the money that we're collecting. And if you notice, I mean, COVID surely has not at all put a damper on building. They have been very busy and working really hard. So it's, that's just what I think. People have no idea how busy your county government has been while everybody else has been closed, other than the poor people in the grocery store. The essential workers have really been working hard. So that's all I've got.
All right.
I'd like to just, so we're going out now to board supervisor's time. I'm going to take the first shot, piggyback on what you're saying, Evan. Tracy, the job is incredible in terms of the numbers. The numbers of transactions that have flowed through your office are remarkable. And I was really pleased to see that report. I think this thing is the first time I've seen it released, it's the first time I've noticed it. I want to thank you for that. And I also want to go back to the whole issue of gatherings. Dr. Green has provided us with a very, very good statement here. He says, "I need to ask your help with something else preventing some potentially imprudent behavior that I'm hearing through the grapevine." Specifically, I'm referring to stories of people that are holding their own unauthorized versions of canceled school events, such as proms and homecomings, and further, and more. But if the stories are true, these events, especially without masks and distancing, could put a lot of people at risk. And I would like to encourage anybody present this evening that has any relationship or contact with anybody that is planning those kinds of things around Thanksgiving and particularly in Christmas, to please, please caution your family and friends on those sorts of things. That's my comment for this evening.
I need to inform the public. I think this is my fifth year being on this board. When I came on the board, we were putting $1.2 million in our landfill after our taxpayers' money. Last year was the first year that that landfill was in the black. Since the first shovel of dirt was turned. And it came from good management and the trash that we're taking in. And at this point right now, I think we own probably another, what, 300 acres out there now?
220.
With what we got with, what's that, the landfill now?
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Our great-great-great-grandkids can dig holes out there and bury trash. And I think the public needs to know that. There's a lot of updates that needs to be put out here in the public. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all for coming. Have a safe holiday, and we'll see you back the next week.
Yeah, well, I'm not sick. Did, was diagnosed Monday a week ago as crap throat, and I had enough antibiotics in the last week to kill a horse. But with that being said, you know, it's, we're all in this together. I had to miss my grandson's two-year-old birthday party Sunday. You have no idea what that did to me. We have had a Thanksgiving gathering, and I've got a large family, that we, as a family, decided to cancel this week. Our Christmas gathering at my house, we usually have 50/55 against a large family, has been canceled. The Stanley Christmas Parade has been canceled. I got a feeling that you're going to see our government go back into complete shutdown again, and it's like our economy isn't crippled enough already. A couple of things that I would like to see is get, move forward in 2021. We need a building at the Battle Creek landfill. Jeff has moved all the compact equipment into the building to keep it in good shape, and we need to make this building, build, work on the equipment. Guys out there changing sheet foot on equipment in the mud and rain. We still owe Company 24 a, some kind of resolution for the job they did with the Fox residence this past year. But it's tough times for all of us. And, but if we stick together, I put a sticker on the back of my truck this week, and so that I could read it, not to people passing. Be good to people. Uncle Roy is 87 years old, lives in Lakeland, Florida, and this is the first year that he wasn't able to come to the family reunion, our 25th year. And every time I have ever talked to him since I was that big, the last thing he's ever told me was, "Y'all be good to one another." And I think if people would quit acting like horses asses and keep all this political stuff straightened up and start treating people like human beings, wouldn't be a better place to live. So God bless y'all, and thank you for coming out.
Well said, Mark. I'd like to also thank everybody for coming out. I need participation by the, I'm looking on the board as well. One thing I was, just an observation, I don't know if y'all remember or not, but the legislature put through the previous year, a 7-cent gas tax for improvements on 81. And it roped in Page County, which is on this side of the mountain and not even touching 81. Our, my last information was is that this gas tax of 7 cents has now been taken off Page County as a result of efforts by our Senator Mark Tenover. But curiously enough, I go to Harrisonburg, and when I'm over in Harrisonburg, I see the gas prices there at $1.95. We're paying 2.09. They are paying the tax on there, so they should be around $1.87. But yet ours is 2.09. So, I mean, we're 22 cents more than Harrisonburg, and they're paying the tax, and we're not supposed to be paying. So I'm just wondering, why are we getting short into that state? Thank you very much.
Our board actually submitted a resolution in opposition to that, too, to the...
I think that's private enterprise setting the rates. Nothing to do with the county.
For the...
Yes, for stuff right in, when the last one or two shut down, it became an op, an op. No, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming, all of you. He planned to head on that one.
Bye-bye.
Yes, I will.
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 Yeah, I know, right?
It's been very stressful for Monday night.
I've got to call him like all around here again.
Right from now on, Monday, now we know where to go to get there.
We go to that destination, so it's hard to forget.
And I feel much better now.
It's not hard so much of life or death.
Well, Tim has personally gone over to her, so he could go and make sure she doesn't
have to go.
He thinks, um
Okay, I'm trying to talk in public.
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
My boyfriend, his daughter and my boyfriend, my son, too, that's Yeah, yeah, he's not for people are
I got a boy of fifteen years old, and
Yeah, I think about that one.
Yeah, he's not for people are
And what's this? I guess One of the problems is Every time, none of them know it. Except that if they're eighteen, they have three other children, six other
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, and it's Yeah, yeah. But she hasn't had And she's, I mean, I pray, raise the way of the day.
I'm like, why do I do this?
So, I mean, I know people that have died, but
Yeah, that's true.
That's a beautiful idea.
Yeah, it is.
And you're like, dude, that
I'm thirty-two.
I'm thirty-two.
All right.
Yep.
I'm thirty-two.
All right.
Yep.
What you see, huh?
Uh-huh. This and this. Oh, wagon.
I think they have this stuff. You know, I'm not going to move it out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks for calling.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks for calling.
Thanks.
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 Yeah.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks for calling.
Thanks.
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 Yeah, the whole thing.
Have you seen the grass?
Rising, rising, yeah.
All right.
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 Yeah.
Thanks.
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 Yeah.
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 Rising, rising, yeah.
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 All right, y'all, we got a long line.
Can you water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lower or what?
Um, what?
Probably get out there, walk around with it.
Um, I have a, I have a disabled son, so I mean, I always, I've always got the full shot, and I've got my eighty-four-year-old mother I'm taking care of.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I'm downstairs, but I'm
Yeah.
I can't believe this man broke a hand.
Yeah.
I wonder, are they still paying on the school fannings?
Does the county still pay, does my tax plan still pay on the school fannings?
I don't know.
Well, then they should have a fucking school.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't.
Doesn't seem like that would be impossible.
Anyway, we're about to talk to talk over that thing.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, what's the address for Steve?
This Steve's
What do I want?
What do I want?
They don't even
They don't
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 Yeah.
Anyway, we're about to talk to talk over that thing.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, what's the address for Steve?
This Steve's
What do I want?
What do I want?
What do I want?
They don't even
They don't
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 Yeah.
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 And I was going back to you, and I'm
Master back to you.
Yeah.
Took a lot of time, and
Oh, all the minutes?
Yeah, I gotta add the ones from this year, ten hours time.
Yeah.
But that took, that took a long time.
Oh, actually, yeah.
Yeah, it was super hard.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting if we
We can come at you.
Nobody's gonna be able to tell.
I mean, the ones that you can get the term are ones that do come, but
Mm-hmm.
Most of them aren't on a common jack car and puts their time.
Uh-uh.
Not, not when it's cold.
Yeah, those are a hundred pieces, um, at the other one.
I think it's a disservice.
Yeah, yeah, it's a surgery.
Um.
Okay, great.
I was up in the catwalk a significant amount of the time. The truth of the matter is, if they wanted to shut us down, they should have called the fire marshal, where they see people sitting in the aisles. They weren't even in seats.
I remember seeing Justin in his gear after he was either at that age, he was taking my leave. I did a lot of facting.
Ah!
I kept turning my back to the other actor, and then when they wanted to get my attention, I'd like do the half turn, give him my profile very dramatically. And if I wanted to get very serious, I would say something. Like
There were many moments that I watched, and I backed away. You know, they are first coming, second coming, and some pictures, this is their first one. Just seeing that the angel appearing at the end was huge, I was, I was very anxious about that, knowing it's coming, knowing it on my gums two or three times.
No, what? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Prior, I mean, Eric, there's a woman, and we're there, and begin having hallucinations
to the bone, hearing voices to the bone. So he gets back, and he's like, who's this guy? And then the black person, who's in the back of the light, he knows, he could almost find him. And there she stands, lying on the floor, waving that shirt, and she's very careful on that.
Griefy, strong.
With great work, he did great work, he did And that's
Yeah.
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 Dr. Miller did a foul, strange, difficult, he had a heart, he was a heart attack, he was in the middle of a
Ah!
I missed him on the
Ah!
As I said, the rating card, he's just surprised by sixty-four percent of fifty years, with four, they can actually not imagine The wind from there, the The question, the special, the active state, the possible, the national, the Kyle, the And We don't call, call this, what central The And 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 And
McConnell, the moderator, that's the variable strength of our national security, is indeed... I mean, the frame of concern, and the... How the government, for shit, and it was... I think this was drawn down, and it didn't stand a rational place.
McConnell had made two remarks about the days where... Otto, Senator Paul, too, Nebraska's staff, that he feared this close, weak with strength, was not rounded. How they made the world, and they didn't play. And he thought, um, that the new president was desperate, going anyway, to move, to remove troops in Afghanistan. He was one of the United States, and he was very... And he was...
I realize Joe Biden has moved the nation to thirty-three and two state appointments to Delaware, that they don't see not some confidence in states that look... On the plate of Homer and Aladdin, that's... I think he's told not to give him my grandest presidential, there was three and intelligence involved, and then we provided him any time. You know, uh, the normal organization for the United States, uh, in, uh, um, it's, uh, I just want to give you, um, uh, what you see. As they would be trying to find out if President Trump was here, and he was here, it was memorable, and it was... What we are talking about, is that the Department of Commerce and Sports, something both for the Republican, the Democratic, the Democratic Party, and the Democratic Party. Last month, the Department of Commerce, the Department of State, the Department of Defense, the Department of Justice, and the Department of Homeland Security, they have been supporting the administration, and then for our right man. Last month, the Department of Commerce, the Department of State, the Department of Defense, the Department of Justice, and the Department of Homeland Security, they have been supporting the administration, and then for our right man. Last month, the Department of Commerce, the Department of State, the Department of Defense, the Department of Justice, and the Department of Homeland Security, they have been supporting the administration, and then for our right man.